Well, welcome to you all. Delighted that you could be with us this afternoon. My name is Joe O'Keefe and I am the interim dean at the Lynch School. In my second year now as interim dean. And before we begin our panel, you know, it's a... Certain events that happen every year become benchmarks, really, of time. And last year, when we gathered here to listen to Andy Hargreaves talking about sustainable leadership, I took the opportunity to give just a very brief update of the state of the school. Now, this won't be any lengthy talk, certainly. But one of the things I think that is a real testimony to the strength of the school, of the students and the faculty, of the administrative team, is the fact that we continue to grow and to excel in ways that we're proud of and I think all of you who are affiliated with us should be proud of, too. This past year, for example, we were named 16th School of Education in the country, up from 23rd by the U.S. News &amp; World Report. Last year, we had a 28% increase in grants for research and development, a 64% increase in gifts from foundations and corporations to support our work, an 82% increase in our annual fundraising from our graduate students, funds which go to support current graduate students. And for any of tho... For those of you who contributed to that fund, I am very grateful, indeed. In the book that... One of the booklets that was distributed hot off the press, Knowledge at Work for Good, you can find out about so many of our efforts related to research and outreach. But let me highlight just a few. Last year, Lynch School faculty published 29 books, 29 chapters in edited books, and 89 articles in journals. And I'm happy to say that some of those publications were joint-authored with faculty and with graduate students and with some undergraduate students also. Everyone together engaged in this important work. Seventy-eight times, Lynch School faculty were cited and quoted in major media outlets as experts in their field. By various measures, our teaching continues to be, as it has been for 50 years, a remarkable strength of the school, as witnessed by student evaluations internally and a number of outside assessments. We are underway in our Teachers for a New Era grant that we received last year from the Carnegie Corporation, $5 million, to do research about and to reform the way we prepare teachers, especially knowing that it's so important to continue with teachers after they graduate, in their first years in schools. We hired four wonderful junior faculty last year, all of whom were the first choice of the search committees, so we were four-for-four, which I'm delighted about. And this past year, we have just named Professor Janet Helms, who directs our Institute for the Study and Promotion of Race and Culture, to the Augustus Long Chair, a distinguished faculty position for Professor Helms. And we are now, this year, embarking upon the search for the Nelson Chair, looking for a senior scholar with expertise like Dr. Helms in issues of race and many of the issues, really, that we're discussing today. We continue to have high enrollment of students, 8% of the undergrads in the university, 23% of the graduate students, the largest number of grad students at Boston College, call the Lynch School their home. And we partner with Boston Public Schools, a number of Catholic schools to whom we have a commitment, and we do what we do in collaboration with networks, both national and international. In all of these, not only do we do well, and we certainly do, but we also hope to do good. In our mission statement, we talk about the very diverse initiatives, psychologists, teacher educators, administrators, people with expertise in research methods, using different methodologies, having different interests. But what unites all of our diverse work is our commitment to make the world more just. I'm delighted to introduce to you and his... He has also introduced you in the program, John Cawthorn, the Associate Dean for Outreach and Student... And Students, who was a major person to put together this symposium in commemoration and continuing commemoration of the 50th anniversary of the landmark Brown v. Board of Education case. So I am delighted to give the lecturn to John, and welcome, John. Thank you for... In advance, for all of your efforts to put this together.
You might want to save that thank you until later, although, knowing our panelists, I'm certain that we'll want to thank them. Good afternoon and welcome to the last in a series of programs. Boston College and the Lynch School of Education have sponsored to celebrate the 50th anniversary of Brown versus Board of Education. Fifty years ago, a unanimous Supreme Court ruled that segregation was inherently unequal and ordered an end to segregation mandated by law. In the 50 years since Brown, we have instituted many policies and practices to ensure that all children have access to excellence and equity in education. Unfortunately, residential segregation has led to the fact that many of our schools are even more segregated in the North than they were before Brown. And so we have had to find new ways to address the issues of excellence other than simple integration of schools. We're having to find new ways to achieve what has become, for this country, a very, very elusive goal. This afternoon, we are pleased to welcome two of Boston's most outstanding educators, Roger Harris and Jean McGuire. They have long histories of working for equal and excellent education. Today, they will share with us the ways in which the organizations they lead provide excellence in education. Deborah Meyer was scheduled to be with us today, but an unfortunate scheduling snafu made it impossible for her to be here. However, you can hear her at the Leadership Summit of the Decade, November 4 through 6, at the Omni Parker House, and I believe that there's mention of that in the materials you got as you came in. I also want to draw your attention to the Fourth Annual Diversity Challenge Conference, Making Race and Culture Matter in Community-Focused Interventions, that begins tomorrow here on One of the things that has struck me, as I have gotten older, is that I have found more and more time to complain about young people. And I remember very well, when I was a young person, resenting the fact that old people said that we didn't do anything. George Eliot wrote, "There is no hopelessness so sad as that of early youth, when the soul is made up of wants and has no long memories." We want to refute that statement today. James Eunice is a student in the Lynch School of Education. He's a member of the class of 2006. He hails from Gloucester, Massachusetts, and he came to Boston College as a much-heralded football player. Unfortunately, injuries forced him to forego those activities, and they gave him plenty of time to try others. As he looked around Boston College and talked with his friends, both athletes and non-athletes, he realized that there were very few opportunities, formal opportunities, for students to talk about issues of race and class. Instead of simply making that observation, he chose to do something about it. He, along with a few friends, after consult... After consultation with faculty and staff, founded the group Faces. He will explain the philosophy that underlies the group's effort. I will simply state that it's very comforting to realize that young people do, in fact, take the initiative when it comes to talking about difficult issues. One more thing about James. Everyone who knows him, and I do mean everyone, thinks he is the nicest and the most respectful young man they have ever met. And I'm pleased to present to you one of the founders of Faces, Mr. James Eunice.
I would like to start off by saying that it is an honor and a privilege to be able to introduce our two guest speakers today. Thank you, Dean Cawthorn, for allowing me this opportunity. But before I get in to introducing our speakers, I just wanted to elaborate a little more on what Faces is actually about, like Dean Cawthorn just mentioned. To sum it up in a couple of sentences, Faces is a new organization, like Dean Cawthorn just mentioned, where white students and students of color have come together to work with already existing organizations on campus, like the Ohana Leadership Council and other cultural clubs, to help make... To help change the culture at Boston College. Through our programming, we hope to foster more awareness and educate our community on issues of race, racism, and stereotypes, and hope to create a community that is more united and a campus that is more comfortable for all students. And there are a lot of other students, besides myself, working on this initiative. And right now, currently, our faculty advisor is Dr. Lily Albert. She's a professor in the Lynch School of Education. And just to say a few things about her, she is an absolutely amazing person, and if it wasn't for her, we would not be here, and new Faces would not be where it is today. So thank you, Dr. Albert. Now, with that said, I'd like to introduce our speakers. Our first speaker is Dr. Roger F. Harris. Presently, the chief executive officer and headmaster of the Boston Renaissance Charter School, the largest charter school in Massachusetts and the largest single-site charter school in the nation, and co-founder of Roxbury Preparatory Charter School. Dr. Harris has devoted 30 years working with youth in Boston's public schools. Former principal of the national award-winning Timelte Middle School, Dr. Harris has worked in traditional Boston public schools as a classroom teacher, administrator, athletic coach, and mentor, earning national and international recognition as an outstanding urban educator. Dr. Harris also teaches a course at Boston College's Lynch School of Education. His success with urban schools extends beyond our shores and has attracted the attention of educators in Sweden, where he has become a frequently invited speaker, addressing issues related to motivating and successfully educating urban students, building effective educational teacher teams, establishing successful school, business, community partnerships, and developing strong home and school relationships. He has served as a mentor principal to the Harvard Principal Certification Pattern at the Harvard Graduate School of Education and has been the recipient of numerous civic and community awards, including the 2000 United States Department of Education's John Stanford Education Heroes Award, the 2001 Massachusetts Elementary Principals Association's Principal of the Year Award, and the 2001 U.S. Department of Education's National Distinguished Principal Award. Roger Harris was born and raised in the Roxbury section of Boston, attended the Boston Public Schools, served three years of active duty with the United States Marine Corps, including a 13-month tour of duty with a combat unit in Vietnam. He was a football standout at Boston University, where he earned a bachelor's degree. He received a master's degree from Boston State College, a doctorate of philosophy degree from Boston College, and is a member of the lead Boston class of '97. He is married to Cheryl Watson-Harris, principal of the Tobin Elementary School in Roxbury, and has six children. Our second speaker is Dr. Jean M. McGuire. Jean McGuire has been Executive Director of the Metropolitan Council for Education Development Incorporated, Medco Inc., for 31 years. In that capacity, she has provided educational opportunities to thousands of urban school children by providing access to quality suburban public schools in 32 communities in the greater Boston area. In addition, she has served 10 years as the first black female elected to the Boston School Committee at Large. She has served as a board member on numerous organizations, including the Children's Museum, Community Change Incorporated, Encampment for Citizens, Citizenship, and the Massachusetts Women's Political Caucus. Dr. McGuire attended Howard University for three years and holds a BS from Boston State College and MA in Education from Tufts University and an honorary doctor of human letters from Salem State College. And now, welcome up to the podium, our first guest speaker, Dr. Roger F. Harris.
When I was 19 years old, I joined the Marine Corps and volunteered to go to Vietnam. And it was in Vietnam that I learned that we should not take anything for granted. And so I'd like to take just a moment to thank the Creator for allowing us all to be here, and I pray that we all are able to get home safely. I'd like to thank John Cawthorn and Father O'Keefe for inviting me to be here tonight. I really appreciate it. It is an honor for me to sit on the panel with Jean McGuire, who I consider to be the queen mother of public education in Boston. And when I look out in the audience, I see Paul Parks, who's been a role model and a mentor for me for years and years and years, and I... It's good to see you. Thank you for coming. I guess I should begin with a little bit about myself and why I do what I do. As you heard, I was born in the Roxbury section of Boston, attended the Boston Public Schools through high school, from kindergarten through high school. The Boston schools were similar but very different than what they are now. The climate in Boston was much different then than what it is now. And I can remember why I chose to go to English High School. And it was because it was an all-boys high school and it had the best football team in the city. And I thought that if I went to English High School, I'd be a football standout, and that would be the way that I would pay my way through college, since I... My mother couldn't afford to send me to college. And so I enrolled at Boston English High School, but something happened there. The coach, for whatever reason, to this day, I still, I'm not sure, never even let me put on a pair of pads, so I never got to play, never got to try out. And all my hopes and dreams of going to college went out the window. And then I had... Because my college dreams went out the window, I connected with a group of students who weren't the most studious students in the school. And my experience in high school wasn't one that I'm very proud of. And I remember a couple of teachers told me that I was in the wrong course. My mother had me enrolled in the college prep course, and two teachers told me that I shouldn't be in the college prep course, and that people like me, I'm going to college and I should transfer and go to trade school. And back then, trade school was supposedly for dummies. And I bought into it. So I went home and I told my mother, "Ma, teachers told me that I don't belong in this college course. I should go to trade school." And my mother said, "I don't care what they told you. You're my son, and you're going to stay in English High School, and you're going to finish English High School. You're not transferring to trade school." And I think back, if I'd listened to those teachers transfer to trade, I'd probably be rich now, working on the Big Dig. But I barely got out of high school. Barely got out of high school. And upon graduation from high school, I joined the Marine Corps and volunteered for Viet... To go to Vietnam. It was in Vietnam that I woke up. I woke up because, just like many of the soldiers that are in Iraq right now who are fighting for a cause, you know? I believed the cause. Back then, the cause was to stop communism before it spreads. And so I volunteered because I thought I was tough. I knew I was tough. And I went over, and when I got there, I realized that I was ignorant to world politics and I didn't understand what was go... Did not understand what was going on. And the Vietnamese folks that we were supposed to be rescuing didn't even want us there, and they used to spit on our trucks and tell us to go back to America. But the war escalated, and at the same time, I read about a friend of mine who was excelling as the first black quarterback in the Atlantic Coast Conference, and I started thinking about college. And I wrote him and asked him, "Is this Freddie from Boston?" He said, "Yeah, and you should be here." I began thinking about going to college, wishing that I could go to college. And I was very, very fortunate. You know, the war escalated. My unit moved up to the DMZ, which at the time was a demilitarized zone that separated North Vietnam from South Vietnam, and it looked like no one in my unit was going to make it back. I had the opportunity to call my mother, and I told my mother, I said, "Ma, I just want to tell you that I love you, that I miss you, I'm sorry for all the things that I've done, and that you'll prob..." She said, "Why are you talking to me like this?" I said, "Because everyone in my unit is dying, and you'll probably never see me again." And she said, "You're coming back. You're special. God has a plan for you." So I said, "Ma, everybody's mother has a plan. Everybody's mother thinks their kid is special." You know? And I said, "I'm putting pieces of special people in bags, not even whole bodies." So, you know, everybody's mother thinks they're special. I'm telling you something. Don't believe what you see on TV. My unit is getting wasted." She said, "You're coming back." She said, "Besides, if you don't come back, who's going to pay this telephone bill?" She was trying to be funny, and I'm... And I was needing some sympathy. So I said, "Put my grandmother on the phone, please." And my grandmother got on the phone. I said, "Grandad, I just want to tell you I love you and I miss you, and I miss the pancakes on Sunday mornings, but it looks like I'm not going to make it back because everybody in my unit is dying." And my grandmother said... She was going deaf at the time, and she said, "Well, it was good talking to you. I have a piny oven. I'll see you when you get back." And she gave the phone back to my mother. I didn't want to speak to my mother, so I asked for my older sister. My sister took the phone. I said, "I had been sending her my checks. I said, "Just make sure that when I die, that Ma gets the money I've been sending you and the $10,000." That was the insurance on a soldier back then, and I thought that was a lot of money. I figured if I went to Vietnam, I had nothing to lose. If I died, my mother would get $10,000 and be able to buy a house. So I told my sister, "Make sure Ma gets the money." My sister said she would, and then she put my mother back on the phone. And my mother's last words to me were, "You're coming back. You're special. God has a plan for you." And I remember hanging up, being angry at my mother, saying, "My mother's in denial. She doesn't want to recognize the fact that her only son is going to die in Vietnam." And a lot of miraculous things happened, and as you see, I was able to make it back. And I've been blessed. I've been truly blessed in many ways. I was able to get accepted or to get a tryout with a school in Nebraska, played a couple years of football out there, transferred to BU, did well at BU, and entered the Boston Public School system in 1974, which was the first year desegregation. And if you've seen Eyes on the Prize, or some of you might have lived through it, it was not a pleasant sight. It was not a pretty thing that happened in Boston that year and the years that followed. And I got assigned to Hyde Park High School. At the time, South Boston High School, Charleston High School, and Hyde Park High School were probably the three most explosive high schools in the city. And it was maybe after the first week that I realized that I did have a special gift. When I spoke to kids, didn't matter what color they were, black, white, Asian, didn't matter, kids listened and they responded. And my mother's words came back to me, "God has a plan for you. You're special." And so for the last 31 years, you know, I've been operating under that premise. I believe that my life was spared for a reason. I didn't understand it when I was in Vietnam, because I couldn't understand why other soldiers died and I didn't. You know, guys that were better people than I was, you know, people that were... That weren't sinners. And I didn't understand it. And it wasn't until I began teaching and I saw the effect that I had on kids, and my mother's words came back in the echo in my head, "God has a plan for you. You're special." And so for the last 31 years, I've been on a mission. I believe that my life was saved so I can do things for kids and create opportunities for kids that I didn't have. And so when I think about why we're here tonight, Brown versus the Board of Education 50 years later, and what I do and how it all relates, I think about the promise of educational equity and how that still remains to be fulfilled. But it's real easy to point fingers and say what should happen and what didn't happen, what needs to happen, and do this, and talk about them or they, and, you know, the government. It's much harder to jump in and take a piece. So what I did is I took a piece. And I started as a teacher, and I was very happy as a teacher. I was a physical education teacher and health teacher, football coach and basketball coach, and I was having fun. I was in the gym every day. I was working out with the kids, and I was getting paid. And what I realized was that there were other teachers in the building who weren't as successful as I was and who didn't have the same rapport with students that I did. Kids would come to me, other teachers would come to me. Everyone was coming to me asking for help. And that's when I started to think that I need to be able to impact more than just the kids in my classroom. So I went back to school and received my masters and eventually became assistant headmaster so I could impact the school. And I had a very successful career at the high school level with students in different capacities. But it got to a point where the superintendent called me and asked me if I would consider taking over a middle school. And he said the middle school was the worst in the district. He said the inmates have taken over the asylum. And at the time, I was making $31,000 a year. And I said, "Well, how much does it pay?" And he said, "$51,000." He said, "But it's a rough school. It's a rough school. The principal doesn't come out of his office. The kids are... The teachers are sliding incident reports under the door." You know? So I said, "$51,000? I said, "Do you know I went to Vietnam for $55 a month?" I said, "When do I start?" And in a matter of short time, we turned that school around, and then superintendent asked me to go to Timelte School. And I didn't apply to go there. Superintendent asked me to go there, and some of the faculty members were resistant. And my introductory speech to the teachers was, "I understand you all. Don't appreciate the fact that I've been selected as a principal, but I didn't ask to come here. The superintendent sent me here. And what we need to focus on are the kids. Doesn't matter who the principal is. We need to focus on the kids. And think about things like this. We're all in the same boat, and we have to grab an oar and row. And we have to row in the same direction. And you can't sit in a boat with your arms folded, pissed off. You can't sit in a boat with your legs hanging out in the water, dragging us down. You have to row. And if you don't row, you have to get out the boat. And if you don't get out the boat voluntarily, I'll put you out the boat." And folks are talking about me. They said, "Oh, this so-and-so, he doesn't know what he's doing, and he doesn't realize that my cousin is the mayor and da-da-da-da-da-da." I told folks I didn't care who their relatives were. I didn't care who the family members were. If they weren't here for kids, then they didn't belong in that school. And the first year, I got rid of a number of teachers, and they said, "He doesn't know what he's doing." And the next year, another group of teachers had to leave. And every year, I brought in a new cadre of teachers, and every year, things got better and better for kids. And eventually, we had the highest reading in math schools in the city of Boston for six or seven years. But it wasn't magic. It was commitment. It was finding people who were committed to kids and willing to not waive the Union Book, but commit their lives to kids. And to me, when I think about all the issues around equity for kids and the challenges that are faced in schools, and it's easy to point fingers and blame systems, but it comes down to people willing to make a commitment, whether they're teachers or whether they're principals or whether they're people who want to support, you know, public schools. It takes people who make a commitment. And so it got to a point where, you know, I was beginning to experience a lot of success being recognized as an urban educator and invited to speak in different states and different countries and whatnot. And I started thinking about the system. And I said, "If I can do this in a classroom, if I can do this in a school, I should do this for an entire system." So I need to become a superintendent. So I applied to Boston College in the doctoral program, the PSAP program, ad for the PSAP program, so I can become a superintendent. And this was in the early 1990s, and right around that time, the Education Reform Act was passed and charter school legislation was approved. And I didn't know much about charter schools. I was focusing on what I was doing in the traditional school system. But I began getting these calls from a charter school, a Renaissance school. And I said, "I'm not a dead call." And they said, "Listen, we're looking for a headmaster, and everyone we talk to says you're the man that we need." And I said, "I'm not interested. I'm not interested. I've committed my entire career to working with economically disadvantaged kids. I thought charter schools catered to upper-middle-class kids. I thought charter schools were like voucher schools, that the principal could interview students and parents and select their students." So I said, "I'm not interested." And I kept hanging up, and they kept calling back. And they said, "Please, just come down and pay us a visit." And I went down as a courtesy to visit the school, and I was shocked at what I saw, because in a traditional system at the Timelte, we had kids coming from the housing projects. 74, 75% of our kids qualify for free, reduce lunch. Seventy-four, seventy-five percent of our kids qualify for free, and do lunch. I did not expect to see that in a charter school. And when I got down there, what I saw was chaotic. It was a mess. It was 1,100 kids stacked upon one another in a 15-story high-rise, with a bunch of inexperienced teachers that were just out of college. And when I got off the elevator on the 10th floor, a lot of the kids recognized me, and they ran to me like I was a rap star. They were like, yo, that's the principal from the Timbucti. Are you gonna be our principal? You should be our principal. This school sucks. And I was amazed. I was shocked to see the same kids that I had at Timbucti, only twice as many. And I saw all these inexperienced teachers. And I did the rounds. I went in every classroom, on every floor. And then later in the day, I met with teachers, and the teachers were saying, the problem with our school is we have no leadership. And from what we heard about you, we'd be willing to take a pay cut if you would take the job. And then I met with some parents. The parents were saying, we chose a charter school because we wanted something better than the Boston Public Schools, but this place is a mess, and we're pulling our kids out. But if you take the job, we'll stay. So I left that school with my head blown up, feeling real needed. But at the same time, I was thinking about the superintendent track. I wanted to be a superintendent, but I couldn't sleep. And I kept thinking, you call yourself an urban educator. This is the ultimate urban challenge. You've got kids that have been in the Boston system, and don't believe the hype about charter schools, that charter schools cream the best and the brightest. All you have to do is think logically. If your son or your daughter's in a traditional public school, and he or she is doing well, why would you pull them out and put them in an unproven charter school? Parents that choose charter schools tend to be parents whose kids have not been successful in a traditional public school, or parents who are afraid to send their kids to a traditional public school. And many of the kids that come in are academically challenged and behaviorally, academically deficient and behaviorally challenged. And so it's not as, it's not like some of the stories that you read about charter schools in the newspaper. And so I couldn't sleep. I kept thinking, one, I want to become a superintendent. But two, here's this massive school with all these kids who are so needy, what do I do? And so I made a decision to put my personal and professional goals aside to try to impact the school. And so for the last seven years, I've been there. And when I think about charter schools, and how it all plays into this Brown versus the Board of Education decision, you know, I made a list. I made a list of what has happened over the last 50 years. And I'll just read through the list, and then I'll try to connect it to what I'm doing. Blacks and other minority children were legally allowed to attend schools with white children. Busing students to racially balanced schools in an attempt to achieve equality through integration was initiated in cities across America. Massive white flight occurred as a response to integration laws. And when you think about that having happened, schools are now segregated by class rather than by color. And it reminds me of a cartoon I saw in the Phi Beta Kappa magazine a couple of years ago. It was a cartoon that depicted segregation and racism in America, and it had a picture of bathrooms back in the old days, and it said, for whites only. It said, old segregation, for whites only, for coloreds. And then, that was the before picture. And then the now picture said, urban, suburban. And when I think about what has happened, and how people talk about schools, and public schools now, schools are just as segregated now as they were before. Some of the other things that happened in the last 50 years. Affirmative action initiatives were created to provide opportunities for groups that had been traditionally denied access to opportunities. I'll say that again, because I remember when I first became an assistant principal, there was so much resentment towards me. And I'm a much better person now than I used to be. I'm much more patient than I used to be. But I used to go after folks that talked about me, you know? Why'd you say what you said? You want to talk to me outside, that type of thing? But it was an assumption that I was made the assistant principal simply because I was black. No one even thought to ask or to check to see if I had my master's degree and 32 credits beyond. They just assumed that because I was black, I was named the assistant headmaster at West Roxbury High School. So affirmative action initiatives were created to provide opportunities for groups that had been traditionally denied access to opportunity. Affirmative action initiatives have come under attack and have been systematically distorted and discontinued. Flawed staffing in schools with high percentages of students of color occur regularly. Education reform initiatives have been created, such as voucher schools, charter schools, pilot schools, et cetera. Funding inequity still exists. The No Child Left Behind legislation mandates that all children have access to an individual education plan that meets their needs. But there are no teeth in the No Child Left Behind tag. There's not enough money to meet the requirements of No Child Left Behind. A common mistake that has been made across this country was assuming that attending schools with white children, or attending the schools that white children had attended, was better than what was had. And in many cases, it was, but in too many cases, it was not. And I think about Boston, and I think about all the issues that some of my friends went through, being bused to South Boston High School, and the resistance that the South Boston community had against, you know, black kids and kids of color coming into their community. But if you check back into the statistics, South Boston High School really wasn't sending a whole lot of kids on to college. But, you know, folks thought that if they went to schools that were predominantly white, they would just be better. Again, folks are in the dark, they just don't understand things. There was no discussion, or not enough discussion, and thought about the quality of educational opportunities that existed in other schools, or the wisdom to foresee the fallout from the experiment. So what I see now, 50 years after Brown versus the Board of Education, is, one, we are in a catch-22 situation. We live in a capitalistic society. We dialogue about leveling the playing field to promote equity for all, yet we fail to recognize the correlation between educational equity and socioeconomic. In schools that serve economically disadvantaged children, the expectations are lower, the pace of instruction is slower, and the funding is inadequate to meet the merit of needs associated with families at or below the poverty line. The isms of poverty are ignored. And when I think of isms, I think of racism, sexism, alcoholism, drug addiction, the list goes on and on. The isms of poverty are ignored, and a standards-based assessment system is adopted, which clearly delineates the haves from the have-nots, and supports a notion of innate ability, which fuels unfocused attempts to close the achievement gap with no mention of the socioeconomic gap. Joel Spring points out on page 12 in The American School, 1642 to 1993, "The educational system in New England was designed to protect existing authority by providing a class system." Unquote. "The present system is set up to maintain the status quo." So when I think about what I've experienced, what I've seen, some questions come to my mind, and I sit with different principals at different times, and with kids and parents, and I always ask, what is the purpose of school today? When you ask a child that, they really get stumped. But what's even more depressing or sad is when you ask an adult, say, what is the purpose of school today? Why is it important for your child to go to school? And they'll say, to get a good education. And you'll say, what does that mean? What is a good education? What does that mean? And what is the purpose of getting a good education? And what is the end product? And so if school is a means to an end, what is the end product? And if the end product is an educated citizen, what is, and how should we define educated? What does that mean? And what role should colleges and universities play in this new order, if we are to impact change? And again, you know, I've expressed some of my feelings, but I also feel that I can, I can't express my feelings, because I'm not someone who's just talking and pointing fingers and throwing rocks and blaming other folks. I'm trying to make a difference every day. And one of the things that I'm most proud of, and when my day comes, you know, and all of our days will come, I hope the folks will remember what I tried to do. And what I try to do is to organize and inspire adults to realize that our job as an adult, our purpose in life, is to make life better for children that are coming behind us. And so as a principal, what I've always done is grounded myself by saying, what is best for kids? And I make all my decisions based on what is best for kids. And what I try to do is to inspire my faculty to think the same way. And there are some folks who are in education for the wrong reasons. They're not in it for kids. And so I try to weed and sift and sort, and get them out of the profession. And I kindly inform them that they need to do self-inflections, reflections, because the work is hard, the work is difficult, and it's not for everyone. You know, there's an adage that those who can do, and those who can't teach. And folks who say that are folks who never were teachers, who have never tried to teach. But there are some folks who cannot teach, and they're in the profession. And so I suggest to them that they do some self-reflection, and maybe choose another profession, because if you're in this profession, you have to be about kids. And so, you know, I've organized parents, I've organized kids, I've organized business and community people to rally for programs. The Timbucti Program was a huge success, because we had a committed faculty, and we had 23 business partners that were working with us. The Renaissance School is a major challenge. It's a major challenge. It's probably the hardest work I've ever done. We now have 1,427 kids, 15 stories down at 250 Stewart Street. Very inexperienced staff. I think my staff averages age 29, but they're committed, you know, they want to make a difference in the lives of kids, but they just don't have the experience. And so it's almost like a learning institution. It's a teacher's program. We're teaching teachers to become teachers, at the same time, we're trying to fix things for kids that weren't done correctly. And so, getting the hook. All right. Nice way of getting the hook. And so I think we've come a long way, but we have a lot more work to do. And I invite anyone that's in the audience who's willing and able to spend some time in a school, volunteer some efforts in a school, give me a call, come down to the Renaissance School, and I'd be glad to give you an assignment. Thank you very much for listening.
Since we have to be out of the auditorium by 6 o'clock, I'll do the difficult task of keeping it short. Thankfully, I had to do prece writing in school. And some of my friends from Metco, no, I can keep it short. Where are we 50 years after Brown versus the Board of Education? Where are we on affirmative action? Where are we on rights of gay couples? Where are we on welfare rights for those who are poor, particularly the women? Where are we on open housing? Where are we on mass transportation? Where are we on all the issues that were raised for society by Brown One, and then Brown Two? My daughter was three years old, two years old when Brown was passed, and I was in Washington, DC. And we had just finished picketing in front of the White House for the Rosenberg case, where they accused them of stealing atomic rights. And all my friends from Boston came up, Temple, Israel, and other places, and we bunked in my apartment, and we marched downtown. And that day, public accommodations opened up in the District of Columbia, and we could go to Liggett's Drug Store and sit down and eat. You can't eat here. You can't buy here. You can't swim here. You can't vote here. You can't study here. You can't serve in the armed services in the same platoons and battalions. You can't, you can't, you can't. Brown versus the Board of Education challenged us, still 50 years later, that if you want to, you can, but you must put it into practice. And that's what Roger was talking about. The hard, ongoing work that people call the mills of the gods, that grind slowly, that all of us in education, in the helping fields, and even in areas like engineering, people who build roads, and people who make new products, all of us have to move us forward, because we are interdependent, because the one thing Brown told us, there is no separate but equal. All those five and four cases in Brown One were first mounted by Charles Hamilton Houston and his protege, Thurgood Marshall, and Jack Greenberg, and all those wonderful people who were with the NAACP Legal Defense Fund, to try to prove that there would be no commitment to a separate but equal school system. No commitment. When southern states were sending black students out of state, rather than allow them to go to a graduate, or a college, or a high school in their state, they would pay the big cost to send them to Columbia, or University of Michigan, or Chicago State University, rather than pay for them to sit in the same classroom. They even had a graduate law student sit outside the law school. This was their separate but equal, so he could hear the professor, but he couldn't sit in the classroom with him. It was symbolic that that day, my friends from Boston, who came to support the Rosenbergs, could go and sit and eat, the symbol of breaking bread together, that public accommodations broke. And unless you understand the two-sidedness of the attack on public education, because that is in part what the implementation of Brown has become, an attack on public education. Unless you understand what it meant not to be able to go to the theater with your friends, unless you put on Senegalese clothes and spoke French in Washington, you couldn't go to the theater, you couldn't go to movies, you couldn't eat in restaurants, you couldn't try on maternity clothes, but you could if you were African, but not an African-American. Unless you understand that in those days, most people did not finish high school. Eighty percent of the students, when I finished high school, did not go on to college. That was, that's a long time ago, 1948. They didn't go to college. Three people in my sister's class at Canton High School went to college. A Jewish student who was a salutatorian, my sister who was a valedictorian, and for whom they cut the scholarship money in half. It almost made her an impossible burden for her to go to Radcliffe. I stopped college so that my parents could send her. But nobody went to college, but nobody attacked public education then, and said it didn't do everything for all of the children of all the people? Because that wasn't the real issue. It was okay, we had to fill the factories, we had to work the farms, we had to have somewhere for people to go after World War II. The workers, the ones that Dr. Harris said earned more money than he did. So why do we see this attack on public education, just as we get, and did get for a while, close to what we call the physical, the emotional, intellectual integration of the public schools in the United States? Because we did better 10, and 15, and 20 years ago than we're doing now. Gary Orfield studies have shown that public education, particularly in urban areas and some rural areas, are more segregated than they ever were. That's a challenge for us, because with that goes an inequity of resources, make no mistake about it. Those of us, again, on the school bus, like Tiffany the year who went to Lincoln Sudbury and graduated from BC, knew the difference between the Jerrah Amaya E. Burke High School, beautiful art deco high school with minimal resources, and what happened when they got off the bus in Sudbury? Two worlds. Or to just leave the green line at Park Street after coming up off the orange line, and get off at Brookline High School, where they spent $43 million to fix it up. And it isn't just the money, because the Madison Park complex cost over $100 million. But the difference in curriculum, the difference in expectations is phenomenal. It shouldn't be like that, because all of us are going to depend upon these generations in New York, and Chicago, and New Orleans, and Houston, and LA, to support Social Security when we become of age. And when my father died at 117 persons were supporting one person on Social Security. By the time I got on, I mean, I'm still working, but there were three. And many of us-- And many of us had jobs. We could build cars in Detroit. We could work in nursing homes. We had jobs. Many of my friends, my secretary's husband, who's Chinese, Latin school, top scholar, IT person, making a hundred and sixty thousand four years ago, he's been out of work for three years. His job went to India. And he's well-educated. So what goes around comes around, and Brown challenges us that if we want to implement it, if we want to think that we can separate it from affirmative action, which is what white males originally had, particularly white property males, which originally excluded the Irish and the poor whites of Boston and everyone else, if you want to be inclusive, you have to do some equalizing things, taking a little ermine from the shoulders of kings, as Glennon Brooks said, and appoint people men. You have to prepare those students to run America. That glass and steel that crumbled at the World Trade Center was full of people, many of them unnamed and unknown. And as I look at the tasks that all of us face who go to any kind of public school, we must remember, public schools do a better job now than they ever did before. What you're comparing children in schools to is the kind of education that the elite got. The kids in my town who went to Thea Academy, they didn't go to Canton Public Schools or Stoughton. I lived in Stoughton and Canton, Boston. We moved a lot because Dad was a clergyman. You know, you didn't hear that then. There wasn't any MCAS. There were other tests. But there wasn't this expectation that everybody was going to be everything without an incremental increase in what it took to make the academies, Milton Academy what they are, the playing fields, the grass, the libraries, the small classes, the music sounds coming from the music rooms. We had that in some public schools. I graduated from Boston Public Elementary School. One year, I went to the Dearborn School, right in the middle of what is now public housing called Orchard Gardens. It was for defense workers. Dad worked at the Watertown Arsenal during the weekend. He was a minister on Sundays. So if you worked in the Navy Yard in Quincy, Boston, or you worked in the Watertown, you could go and live in this new public housing. It was segregated. The three buildings on Albany Street were for the colored people, and that's where I lived, with Ruth Batson and the head of the NAACP now, Lenny Albert. We lived there, and we went to school with all the other kids who lived across the street, on Eustace Street. And I was the only black girl in what is now considered in most people's minds a school for minorities. And guess what we had in that school? We had French, and we had Latin, and we had orchestra, and I learned to play the violin, and we had cooking, and we had chorus. You know what? It's all gone. The curriculum has been watered down, the language of education has become the language of business, and as far removed from the needs of teachers and children as you could possibly get. And then we wonder, and we had physical education. We played dodgeball. We ran races. We did double dutch and jump rope. We had a full curriculum. It's not there anymore. And if you want Brown to be real in our lives and in the lives of our future children, that legacy is still unfulfilled. I think Gary Orfield's work is a real challenge to us, and he's just one of many. It's a challenge to us morally, because we can't pretend to be running the world, where we're trying to get people who are Sufi and Sunni and Kurd to work together, and we can't live together? You get on the Metco bus, and you leave Boston and becomes white, to all intents and purposes, in spite of the hard work of the Fair Housing Committees and the League of Women Voters and the churches and temples and the good citizens who, rather than waiting for fair housing, as Paul knows, instead took the bus, because there were suburbanites who wanted integration for their kids, because they felt there was something in that that was educationally powerful. And if we want to be a powerful country, we can't have a Mason-Dixon line within our hearts, within our practices, within our curriculum. And that goes for the universities. Except for my years at Howard University, where I was blessed with some of the best professors that you could ever have anywhere. It was after, it actually was during World War II, right, after World War II. All the Jewish professors who fled Hitler in the late thirties and forties were welcomed at Fisk and Hampton and Howard, and much more than they were in the northern universities. So I had brilliant professors. We had the great black professors who had nowhere else to go but the high schools of the segregated school system. And practically every teacher in my high school, after I left, girls Latin had a PhD in front of their name. And that is the secret of a good school. Absolutely top teachers, the very best. And all we could do if we were black was teach and preach and social work. So we were blessed to go to schools with people like Sterling Brown and Franklin Frazier and just wonderful people from the University of Waddis-Ran in South Africa, who told us about what was happening down there in nineteen forty-eight, when segregation became legal apartheid, we called it then. And now here we are, looking at the Sudan and Israel and Palestine and Uganda and Iraq and Iran and North and South Korea. And are we prepared when we can't integrate our schools, our teaching staffs, our administrative staffs, our suppliers of schools, the buses, the heat, the books, all the business people who make schools what they are? Are we prepared to tell the world how to do things when we have yet to commit ourselves fully to implementing Brown? Let me pull out something. This is a problem with having a liberal arts education. And that does not preclude knowing how to work with metal and putting screens and carve wood and sing and play a musical instrument and know how to run a race like Tiffany, do that quarter-mile faster than anybody else in the world. It's because the task and the promise of Brown is that we create people who can be caring and patient and work through things without killing. I pull this out, a poem by Maxine Cuman, January nineteenth, nineteen eighty-five, from The Nation. And this was about Bangladesh. And then I thought, last night on whirling TV, I looked at pictures of the Sudan and the horror there, the genocide, which repeats itself, as it has in the past, in Turkey and Armenia, in Germany and Austria, on the Middle Passage, where probably three hundred million blacks went, and two-thirds of them didn't make it. And listen to this. This is our task. They are weighing the babies again on color television. They are hanging these small bags of bones in canvas slings to determine which ones will receive the dried milk mush, the concentrate made out of ground-up trash fish. For years, we have watched them, backlit by the desert, these miles of dusty hands holding out goat skins or cups, the animals dead or dying of rinder pest. And after the credits come up, I continue to sit through dinner with Julia, where in a French fish poacher big enough for a small brown baby, an Alaska salmon simles and a court bullion, for a first course steak tatar to awaken the palate. With it, Julia suggests a Zinn-Vandell. This scene has a polite, a touristy flavor to it, and I let it play. But somewhere, Oxfam goes on spooning gluey gruel between the parched lips of pot-bellied children, the ones who perhaps can be saved from quashakor, an ancient Ghanaian word, though with probable lowered IQ. The voiceover explains, caused by protein deficiencies linked to the drought. And the drought has grown worst with a gradual increase in herds overgrazing the thin-forged grasses of the Sahel. This, the voice says, can be laid to the natural greed of the nomad, deceived by technicians digging new wells, which means, in a slow pan of the sand that the water table has dropped. And now to Julia's table is born the resplendent fish. Always the camera is angled so that the guests look up. And among them, I glimpse that sly dean Jonathan Swift. And after the credits come up, I continue to sit with those who are starving to death in a distant nation, squatting, backlit by the desert, hands out in my head. And the Dublin dean sits there, squats there too, observing the population that waits for too little dried milk, white rice, trash fish. Always the camera is angled up so they look up while their babies are weighing on slings and colored television, who look into our living rooms and the shaded rooms in which we sleep. Let's wake up and implement Brown. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Roger and Jean. We have microphones placed in the front and the two aisles here, and we will take questions from the audience. Paul?
First of all, I want to say, once again, I'm very proud. You both, all of you, have done a very beautiful job, and I'm privileged to be here and listen and see how you have, just the changes, how you've grown and blossomed in all the years. I can say that because of who I am and how old I am. Let me say, I would like for you to reflect on something. I was Secretary of Education for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I used to go to the various schools that were teaching, they're teaching teachers to teach, schools of education. And what I began to see was that we're not training teachers to teach the children that they're going to face when they come into the classroom, in so many cases. We're not teaching them about the value of human beings, that the accident of your birth does not make you better than another person, that when you go into a room and you see children, they are children, and you ought not to separate them out on the basis of something that you understand. Unfortunately, we get a lot of people who come into the teaching world who come out of their own culture and don't understand and haven't been trained to deal with people in a totally different culture. I was a consultant to the State Board of Education recently, and they suddenly woke up one morning and found that eighty-five percent of their teachers in their public school system in Mississippi was white, in a system that was almost totally black. And they decided what they'd better do is to train white teachers to work with black children and their parents. One of the things I keep saying to people is that our kids are the best in the world for measuring your body language. They know when people don't like them. They understand when people don't like them. It's a trait that came out of Africa. When I was working in Africa, I saw it all the time. I said if I was going to hire a person, I was going to hire somebody who came from Africa to work as my personnel person because of their... So all I'm asking and saying is that I don't think that our public education systems where we're training teachers or doing the kind of job that they ought to be doing in order to deliver teachers into the public school system or any other school system that understands the value of the people that they're going to teach. Thank you.
Could I answer? I think this is on... Can you hear me? The curriculum you get when you're planning to become a teacher, either as an undergraduate or with a master's in education, depends a lot upon the length of the time that you're with a master teacher and the curriculum that allows you to be maybe culturally prepared for whatever you think you're going to get. I don't think you can know where all your student teachers are going to be teaching. They could be, they could be in an Indian reservation, because we still have them, or they could be black like me and yet not know much about East Asia or Southeast Asia. I can remember teaching, stopping in the woods on a snowy evening, you know, Robert Frost, and we talked with the horses' heads and the steam coming out of their nose and the pine trees with the snow waiting down the branches, and that part where he says, "I think I know whose woods these are." And we asked the students to illustrate it. I was really humbled when I got back the pictures. There was a Vietnamese student I was helping with teacher training at Tufts, and the boy, when he demonstrated, "I think I know whose woods these are," he drew a picture of a little Vietnamese boy with a bundle of faggots on his back, sticks to cook in the fire. "I think I know whose woods these are." That's not what the poem was about, but you see, I didn't bridge that gap because I didn't know. It isn't that schools of education can teach you everything, that they can teach you to be open, to listen more to your students, and to... See, that's, I guess that's the problem with MCAS and high-stake stuff. I don't believe in any of that. There's no such, there's no single measure of the breadth and length and depth of a person or a human soul. You just can't. It doesn't mean anything. Ten, twenty years from now, what you got on that exam isn't what's going to count. What will count is if the teacher or teachers, whatever their craft, imparts a love of it, a concern for, opens the student to questions. I don't think there's just answers. I think there's more. You give teachers as much skill and mostly keep them with a master teacher, maybe for two or three years. I think we're thrown to the wolves too soon. I walked into class with forty-three kids in thirty-six seats in the South End, DC current, old broken crayons, twenty-two books published by Scott Forsman in nineteen twenty-two. And a lot of what I did was in my head and what I took from my salary to buy materials. That isn't always the case, because you can be in a top school and still not expect as much out of your students, be they females or people of color or from another country. You have to think, is the person I'm teaching going to be my doctor, my surgeon, my bus driver, my pilot, my judge, my bank officer? And teach accordingly. Always expect the most and know that it's a road, and you're traveling on it. It's not an end of a journey.
I mentioned earlier that Paul Parks and Jean McGuire are mentors of mine, and I don't know if you remember this, but about fifteen years ago, I was in her office, and she had a sign on the wall. And, you know, my business is teaching teachers to become better, and I'm often asked to come back to BU over to Harvard to talk to the graduates about how to get the job, how to land a job, how to become an effective teacher. And I quote the sign that you had on your wall, and it said, "Kids don't care how much you know until they know how much you care." And so what I tell folks that are about to graduate, don't walk into a school, if you want a job and you want to be good at what you do if you're working with kids, don't come in waving your degree, saying you're from Harvard, you're from Boston College. No one cares. The kids don't care what school you went to. They want to know how much you care about them. So kids don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. And one of the other things that I constantly drill into my teachers is that MCAS measures academic information that you're expected to have learned. But if you're a teacher, if you're a real teacher, you have to be concerned with developing the academic, social, and emotional aspects of children. So it's not just about academics. It's academic, social, and emotional development.
There's a comment he made about the kinds of students who might come to your school that they were doing very well where they were, they wouldn't come to Metco, they wouldn't come maybe to Renaissance, because they would be satisfied. And often, students come with behavioral problems. I found that, not all of it, part of it is, we don't, we make kids sit still too much. We don't have enough physical education. We have schools that are taking recess away, recess, when kids just forget everything, you know, like we do when we go get a cup of coffee, and for those who smoke a cigarette, break. We don't give them that break where they can get some blood to the brain. And we don't teach them about their bodies and the life skills they'll need to stay healthy. And I think that's a part of what happens to a lot of students, even with all their other difficulties, if it isn't balanced with the humanities, with hand skills, with art and music, the things you use your ability to be literate with. I think schools are often missing, they're going to miss the boat if MCAS focuses most on just the academic part of it. I think that is, some of that's deadly. And I find the kids know what you teach them, but then we don't ask the kids, what do you know? They know a lot of things we don't know. And if you'll be a student by your children, if you'll be a teacher by your student, you'll be taught, if you listen to them first. Because if you listen to them, they'll listen... Because if you listen to them, they'll listen to you.
Hello, it's good to see you both. I just want to make just an observation and ask a question. I came to Boston in ninety-six, as you know, to work in Boston Public Schools. And the vision in my head was the media representation of desegregation in Boston from the seventies. And it was a struggle just to think about being here. And I felt a little bit, when I was listening today, knowing both of you, that I didn't hear that struggle. And I, and I, and I know that you were there. And so I would just ask, you have a moment in the sun where you can really talk to those of us who are in sweet land like B.C. about, about what it meant to be in the middle of that? And what, what is it that we have to do? And you've alluded to it in terms of being prepared for the children that we'll teach. But if we can't talk about race, and I didn't really hear that conversation. And I don't think we're going to get anywhere unless we can put that on the table in some way. And you've got the stripes from that struggle. So I, I would ask for some words of wisdom to us about what we ought to be doing in this place to get that conversation going, as well as the conversation, as you mentioned, Roger, about socioeconomics.
Roger and Jean, you have about five minutes, so be tiffy.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I don't think that can be answered in five minutes. But I'm, I'm interested in, in the teacher prep programs because, you know, for so long, I see teachers that are coming into the profession and aren't prepared to deal with the students that they confront. And that, and that's, you know, whether they be black, brown, or white. And, you know, there's, there's a myth out there that, you know, black kids need black teachers. And, you know, and Asian kids need Asian teachers. You know, it's, it's great to, to have role models and, and teachers that look like you. But I think back to a, a situation at the Timbuktu School a few years ago, when, when our budget was cut again and, and our class size went up to thirty-three. And teachers were complaining, you know, that they could be better. We could achieve the same level of excellence if our student-teacher ratio was lower. And a gentleman came to me and he said, "Let's start a discovery academy." Years ago, we had had a self-contained experiment. So I said, "Yeah, but who would teach it?" He said, "I will." And so I put out a memo to all the seventh grade teachers. I said, "Give me the names of four students that you'd like to send to the discovery academy." So basically, teachers could, could give away four students. And ironically, when, when all the seventh grade teachers turned in the names of the students, all the students were male and all of them were, were black and Latino. But the teacher was a white man. And this was the same time that in Chicago and Detroit, there were these experiments that were happening with black schools for black boys being taught by black men. And here I was in Roxbury, in the heart of Roxbury, surrounded by five housing projects. And I was creating an, an experiment with all black and Latino boys and this white male teacher. And a few months later, I went into the classroom. And I wanted to talk to the kids about transitioning out because when they went to the eighth grade, they were going to be going back into the, the regular classrooms. And they said they didn't want to leave Mr. P. His name was Mr. Potoda. He's a phenomenal educator. He just got a principalship down on the South Shore. They said they didn't want to leave Mr. P. And I wish to this day that I had a video camera and taped that session because I asked every kid in that classroom, "Why is it that you don't want to leave Mr. P?" And they said things like this, "Because Mr. P cares. Because Mr. P takes time with us. Because Mr. P won't go on to something until we all understand what it is he wants us to learn." And the list went on and on. Every kid had something great to say about Mr. P. Mr. P was a white man, these kids were all black and Latino. At the same time, I had some black teachers who crushed and destroyed kids, you know, physically, morally. And so my experience has taught me that it doesn't really matter what color the teacher is. I think it goes back to, again, the sign that was posted in Jean's, Jean's office. Children don't know, don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. But in respect to universities like this, what can you do? I think that we need to get education majors into schools a lot quicker, a lot sooner than we do. Too often, they only get their teaching experience, their student-teacher experience in their senior year. And I think if we can modify the curriculum and get them into schools in, in their sophomore year and give them that exposure and that experience, when they come out, they'll be able to hit the ground running. And it doesn't matter what color they are. You know, they need to learn the craft, but they also need to learn the climate, culture, and develop relationships, you know? And that's, that's the other big piece, developing relationships. Because when, when you're a teacher, if you can develop a relationship with your students, your students will go through fire for you. And, 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 and that's by taking the time. I tell the teachers at Renaissance, "Don't worry about the curriculum." Because so much pressure on, on teachers in schools now with these MCAS. It's high stakes MCAS. And it's, it's important, but it's also important to understand who it is that, that's in the classroom and what they're about. And so I tell teachers, the first two weeks, "Don't even worry about the curriculum. Get to know your, your kids. Develop a climate and culture in the classroom where they trust you." You know, and once they can, and once they do trust you, you can teach them anything.
There's a, okay.
I'm sorry to do this. Unfortunately, we have to vacate this space by six because there's a play that will be happening here later. But we can continue this conversation next door in the Heitz Room in very informal ways. I want to thank my friends for coming. I know how busy you are. And I certainly appreciate your being here. And I appreciate the words that you said. And I appreciate what you have done for all children in the greater Boston area. I want to thank you for coming. I want to thank you for coming. And I hope you have found some things to take away from here. Most of all, I hope you have found some challenges to think about and some new friends to know as resources. Thank you very much.